Well, good morning. My call this morning is meeting the order. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Move for approval.
Okay, we got a motion to second to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just note that Commissioner Moshe won't be able to be at the meeting this morning. With that, we'll go on to approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion to second to approve the bills and vouchers. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, before we move on, have we got anything on that water district yet that we... Is that been... Is that going to get on the agenda again, or we have to...
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. We recently received... We have been unable... The board asked Mr. Milton and I to meet with Mr. Marx from Flattery and Hood, and have not been able to find a time that works in Mr. Marx's schedule. He did recently just provide a written response, and so we're going to review that with Mr. Milton and then bring that forward.
Okay. Okay, well, approval of the minutes from March 28.
I move. Second.
Okay, we got a motion to second to approve them. Any further discussion of that? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. First thing on the agenda then is the annual update. It's the request adoption resolution 2023-12 for Clay County to act as legal sponsor for the DNR funding for snowmobile trails managed by Clay Trails and Alliance. Take it, Greg, you're going to take care of that one?
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, just to note after this, we skipped over the citizens' comments.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
You can do it after this.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Okay, just want to give update on the season. Obviously, we had a lot of snow this year. And just to give you an idea of what we provide the county for recreation and whatnot. So this year, we groomed 4,122 miles. That was 646 more miles than last year. Just for reference, it's... According to Google Maps, it's 2,800 miles from Seattle to New York. Our guys did 656 hours of grooming. That was 14 different drivers. 140 more hours than last year. We groomed from December 15th all the way through March 23rd. It's the first time we've ever groomed for every weekend in March. We did not groom the last week because April 1st is a weekend, and that's officially when our trails are closed. That's when our liability permits end. And so we upgraded. We had three machines running this year. We had one out east in Holly area, and then we do a north loop, south loop, surveying, you know, Moorhead, Dilworth, Glendon, Saban, Barnesville, Holly, Lake Park, Yulin, Hittitl, Felton, Georgetown. And I started writing all the breakdowns. I started with two, and then I remember it was three, then it was four, then it was five. So it was a tough trying year, but... So just asking you guys to be our sponsor again so we can keep providing the snowmobile trails. We do sign those trails to make them safe, to point out the hazards, direct to snowmobiles around hazards and whatnot. Now, we do the snowmobile training for our youth. We do about 20 at the Moorhead class. I think Holly had like 38 this year, if not more. And so, yeah, we're asking you to be the sponsor for the DNR for our funds so we can continue to provide this for the county. And then registrations, of course, are going up. You know, you go to the dealers, they don't have any sleds, you know. Granted, that's part, you know, part of the supply problem that they can't get them as fast, but still, it's a good sales for them, so.
So does you have time to snowmobile at all then, after doing all that?
Barely.
All right. Any questions for Mr.? Greg?
I'd move resolution 2023-12.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion to second to approve the resolution for the snowmobile trails to be sponsored for DNR. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Keep continuing. Thank you, Greg. Okay, with that, we go into citizens' concerns. Is there any citizens out there that want to speak that's something that's not on the agenda? Anything on the computer there?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Okay, next item is presentation and request for letter of support for surface water intake protection plan. You, Mark, and Dan Dis... Mark Pritchard, Dan Disrude?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, just make sure the green lights are on here. Thank you.
Okay, there we go. We should be good.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. My name is Mark Pritchard. I'm the Water Plant Manager for Moorhead Public Service.
My name is Dan Disrude. I'm a source water protection planner with the Minnesota Department of Health. I'm assigned to Clay County and 17 other counties that my supervisors call the Northwest District of Minnesota.
All right, and then we have a brief presentation for you all this morning regarding about a three-year process to get to what we have as a source water intake protection plan. It was a multi-phase process that began all the way back in 2020. And at the end of our brief kind of overview of what the purpose of this plan is, we will would love to respectfully request a letter of support from the county as we begin to implement some of the various items in this plan. So starting off, first off, you know, where did we start this process? Phase one basically entailed what's called a source water assessment. It's really when we have a large study that generates information about potential contaminant sources for the Red River, and then identifying not only what contaminants could be an issue for our intake in the river, but then potential mitigation systems for it as well. The Department of Health, and Dan included, put a lot of work into the original assessment. We did also have a very large group of collaborative agencies, including the county and City of Moorhead, City of Fargo, state representatives from both Minnesota and North Dakota that kind of combined efforts to review this source water assessment. And again, it was about a two-year process that got through this phase one of identifying what potential contaminants could get into the river. And we'll go through a little bit of what that looked like, and then how we moved on to step two or phase two, which was implementing what we learned in that assessment, and then how we can potentially put in mitigation strategies long term. So this graph that we have here, this picture that we have here is kind of in a nutshell what the source water assessment entailed. So for those of you who are familiar with wellhead protection plants, this outer yellow boundary is very similar to the drinking water supply and management area that we've talked about before. This encompasses the portion of the Red River watershed that's essentially 24 hours of travel time upstream from the intake in Moorhead. So if we think about it this way, the red that's kind of at the top of our screen there, that is the average distance that it takes the river to flow about eight hours upstream from us. So if we think about eight hours of travel time, something that is in the river at that time, eight hours later, is most likely next to our intake in the river along Elm Street and Moorhead. So that's what the red indicates. The blue is further out. The blue is up to 24 hours upstream of our intake. So that's really where a lot of our focus lied for this source water assessment, and our main goals were to identify if there were any potential point sources that could be identified. A lot of it boils down to above-ground storage tanks for fuel, for example, stormwater outlets that have direct discharges into the river and things like that. That's really what a big part of the focus was for this assessment, to just identify where could those direct point sources potentially come from, and after identifying them, if there are any feasible mitigation strategies that we could implement long term. So going into our next slide here, those high priority issues in the source water assessment talked a lot about spill mitigation. Moorhead is really fortunate to be able to have a backup supply that we have in the Buffalo Aquifer. So for many years, our strategy has been having monitoring equipment in the Red River at our intake. And if we detect anything that's like a petroleum-based spill, for example, if that takes place, we're able to very easily transfer sources from using Red River water over to our groundwater. So we're very fortunate to be able to very quickly kind of hit that button and switch sources. So that way, we're not pulling in any extra contaminants into the plant for treatment. One of the most prevalent things that was noticed throughout the source water assessment in these two areas, the red and blue areas, was the potential for stormwater to infiltrate into the river directly via stormwater outlets. We also identified a few pipelines that cross the river. We also went over feedlots or, again, above-ground tanks, and then roads and bridges that either directly go over the river at certain areas or are adjacent to them. We looked at those ones for like road salt application in the wintertime and things like that, just, again, trying to identify any potential areas there. We also looked at railroad crossings and boat landings as potential spill sources, although we've been very fortunate to not have any issues there. So continuing on with some of those assessment identification pieces, another thing that we looked at was how the land was being used. You know, in town, it's very urbanized. There could be a lot of, you know, residential use of fertilizers for lawns, could have grass clippings that could go into stormwater outlets, and, again, trying to identify a lot of those different areas. And in the more rural areas, looking at fertilizer use potential, turbidity going into the river through district channels that go straight to the river and things like that. And really, that was a recognition of the fact that land use is very important for keeping watersheds clean, and how to encourage best management practices for like erosion mitigation and things like that that can really benefit a watershed overall. So after we did the source water assessment, that was really phase one of our process. After we accomplished that, we went into phase two, which was the actual surface water intake protection plan. After we had that phase one completed, it was really a review of that assessment plan to identify what did we see. And then the intake protection plan was how could we implement some strategies long term? How could we monitor things a little bit differently perhaps? And how could we, long term, try to make the watershed as healthy as it can be? So that was really what phase two was, and that is where our intake protection plan that we see today comes from. There were a lot of different studies that were listed within the source water protection plan. It's by no means a comprehensive list. We went back all the way to International Water Institute's studies on drain tile, for example, to see if the volume had any kind of effect. Turns out, it doesn't, which is really interesting to know, too. But we looked at everything that we could think of to see, long term, is there implementation strategies that other areas or other agencies have also looked at that we could combine and kind of collaborate with, too? So that was a big part of this intake protection plan as well. As part of this intake protection plan, part of the exercise was to think ahead to what kind of expected changes we could have to source water over time. We looked at chemistry changes long term, whether that be through nutrient loading or total dissolved solids changes or things like that from a treatment perspective. And then after thinking about what potential changes could we see, are there any implementation strategies that we could put in place to kind of buffer out that change? So as part of the intake protection plan, we did summarize a lot of those changes and then the impacts that could be expected to see, again, if we could implement any of those management strategies long term. Priority issues that were identified, again, through the source water assessment, were all baked into this plan. Turns out that we ended up having 48 different management strategies or activities that we could go to, to take care of some of these issues. A lot of them are available for grant funding, which is a great process of this tool. This is very similar to the wellhead protection plan through the State Health Department, that once a plan is in place, we are available to pursue grant funding, which is a great resource for us to take care of, because at the end of the day, resources are sometimes limited, and it's a great way to implement some of these public outreach activities, monitoring strategies and things like that, where it can be a potential no cost to the county and to MPS and to other agencies that would want to participate. So that was a good thing to know, too. Other implementation activities, again, the overall goal of this plan is to promote public health and resource protection, community economic development through a sustained and clean source of water, and bolstering the community infrastructure by maintaining a really reliable and clean drinking water source. The more we can pump from the Red River on a day-to-day basis, the better off we'll be. A lot of times, it's more efficient to do so. And it also goes back to our wellhead protection plan, where we can save that water for those not-so-rainy days. So it's a really good thing to begin thinking of as the river chemistry is changing over time, if there's any management strategies where we can keep it as clean as possible. That drives treatment costs down, it drives rates down, it keeps everything more efficient, and it's a great way to have local and state agencies collaborate on keeping the watershed as healthy as it can be. And that kind of rolls into my next point here. MPS has a lot of monitoring capabilities for the Red River, but we by no means can tackle something like this on our own. And that's where great partners such as the county can come into play, where we can collaborate on activities, and we can also partner with the Minnesota Department of Health for grant opportunities to tackle, again, that the shopping list, as we called it, for up to 48 or 50 activities that we could pick and choose based on what activities we think could be most efficient, so. Some example activities are a lot of public outreach about stormwater management, good use of pesticides and fertilizers, especially in urban areas where they could potentially go down a storm drain pretty easily. Above-ground tank inspections is another good one. Supporting stormwater management in urban areas and in rural areas as well. Promoting wetland restorations through other agencies is something that we can also collaborate with in this plan. So there's a lot of different options. It's a very wide swath of options that we can potentially pick from, which gives us a lot of flexibility to implement different monitoring and management strategies over time. So there's a lot, again, a lot of different options that we can implement based off of this plan. So at the end of the day, again, the overarching theme of this surface water intake protection plan is to promote watershed health for the Red River. There's a lot of different agencies in multiple states that had a hand in forming this plan. There was also Clay County involvement from the staff perspective. And at the end of the day, it's an effort to keep the river as clean as possible so that treatment costs are managed, watershed health is maintained, and we're able to have a really good reliable sources often as it's flowing downstream to us and keeping it clean for years to come. So at the end of the day, we would be respectfully requesting a letter of support from the Clay County Board of Commissioners, similar to the letter of support that we requested back in, I think, 2004 for wellhead protection plan strategies. So I know that's a lot of information. It's a very high 30,000-foot overview of this potential plan. I would be more than happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Yeah, Mark, has the diversion for the Red River been taken into your study? It's actually rerouting the river in the event of a flood. Has that been factored in? And if so, what conclusions have you drawn from that?
Good question. Yes, it has been implemented into the plan to an extent. We are working on seeing if we can get a copy of the model for the watershed flow model through that channel. There is a potential for turbidity levels at the intake to change, but the great thing about the Moorhead Water Treatment Plant is it's able to handle quite a bit of turbidity. So surprisingly, it actually helps our softening process. So the turbidity part was incorporated, and the flow, up to an extent, doesn't really affect us a whole lot. Really, the mitigation for the diversion is... It doesn't pose a whole lot of issues for this plan. It actually helps it out quite a bit, because then on top of being able to protect the intake a little bit better, we don't have to worry about any kind of floods damaging the equipment. So again, we'll be able to pump that river water more of the time and be as efficient with it as possible.
Thank you. The map that you have that shows the area in yellow, is that kind of the defining area that you're considering? Is that what that represents? I know you talked about the red being within one mile and the blue being a little further out, but the... What I'm getting at is, when we did the wellhead protection plans, we actually had established overlay districts. And are you... Is that a proposal here, too, that there would be an overlay district that would have some conditions tied to it?
Not this morning. It's definitely something that we could consider. I think with the optional strategies within the plan as it sits right now, that's a great place to start. But that's definitely something that we could discuss for a future item to bring to the board for consideration.
Well, I think if that ever happened, it would have to have an awful lot of input from an awful large area, including the ag industry.
Yes.
Anytime we start getting into these types of things, there's concerns about their ability to operate, too. Obviously, we all still want clean water. That's the goal here, but... So the request to support, is that... Who ultimately establishes this area? Or what you're calling it here, the... Yeah, the plan. Who establishes this? Is it Department of Health? Who's doing this?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Yes. Commissioner Campbell, again, the picture that you're seeing up there, as far as the yellow is the dwisma surface water, so you're familiar with the dwisma groundwater?
Yes, yep.
As Mark mentioned, you know, the red and the blue is really focused on spill response. So again, obviously, as, you know, the request for partner support, you know, again, as we can see with that map, Moorhead Public Service has no jurisdiction out there. City of Moorhead has no jurisdiction for that area. So thank you for your support with the groundwater plan as far as the overlay districts.
Right.
And again, comparing this to other surface water plans, nobody else in the state has overlay districts for surface water. It's really focused on that yellow area. What you don't see is the source water assessment area, which is actually much bigger, essentially the whole watershed upstream from the intake. But I don't, you know, and again, that'll be between Mark and the Commissioners as far as bringing up some additional protections, but that would be unique, and, you know, great that we have that support. What you're seeing up there is the part one, the phase one. That has already been approved. So that's the science. And again, good questions as far as the diversion project. You know, this was two years ago. There's a lot of, you know, information that was sought out that has probably changed over two years. Will change over the next 10 years. And I think when we revise this plan in 10 years, that that'll be a little bit more clear to us. But this part of it, the map that you see, is already approved. What we're looking for is support for the measures, the activities, making you eligible, Moorhead Public Service eligible for grant dollars to support the activities that are identified, the 48 that were referenced. And our Minnesota Department of Health implementation grant funding is chump change compared to the Bowser grants that are out there. So again, talking about the partners, you know, we're here to support Moorhead Public Service, the City of Moorhead, but I anticipate with the support and approval of this plan, it is really opening up some grant dollars coming into the community through the Soil and Water Conservation District, some of the other partners that are out there that are... It's pretty much voluntary-type programs, so again, the concerns as far as buy-in from ag producers or whatever, it's probably money to support best management practices that they're already doing.
I appreciate those comments. I guess I, you know, I... When something is proposed like this, I always am concerned about what ends up being the policing guidelines on something like this. And, you know, if you... I noticed you pointed out there's three feedlots identified within this area. So are... Would we be looking at different criteria for those feedlots because they're within this area that currently might not be part of our zoning requirements? For example, you know, there gets to be some things that can come up that it's good to know ahead of time on what those plans might be.
Right. And to Mr. Disrude's point, at this time, you know, this is really a voluntary effort to take on and facilitate and bolster best management practices that are already being in place. So I think that for now, the action items that we have the choice to choose and implement in this type of a plan, it's really bolstering, again, what we have already established, so I don't think it would encompass any changes to that. It would just be, again, allowing the potential for grant dollars to help bolster the activities that are already be in place.
Well, I think being good stewards of what goes in the river is a good thing, and I think Lake Winnipeg would agree with us, because, you know, they're the recipients of all of this stuff that comes from us to them, so. It's just, anytime there's something new like this, there's questions that come with it.
Yep. And for an extra comment to kind of build upon that, too, this is a very brief overview of all the work that's been going into this plan, and I recognize that there was a lot of information kind of summed up in about that 10-minute timeframe. So again, this is really an effort to collaborate with plans, other plans that are already in place, and kind of funnel the focus that everyone may have, where everyone's goal is source water protection and quality maintenance of this Red River. And this is an opportunity for everyone to kind of understand the full-encompassing picture of some of those actions, action plans that may be within other plans as well. And this can funnel the focus to see that a given action item may be within three or four regional plans, and this would allow grant funding opportunities to potentially tackle those all collaboratively at once.
If I can, Mr. Chair, one more question. So this is great that Moorhead Public Service is always protecting water sources, which is great. I'm curious, do you have anybody, your counterparts on the west side of the Red River also doing the same thing?
They were... Yes, in a sense. The City of Fargo Water Treatment Plant staff are actually a part of this process from day one. The regulatory guidelines that North Dakota follows are different from Minnesota, so they don't have something like this in place, but they are definitely interested, because at the end of the day, we all treat the same water. So what benefits one side of the river definitely benefits the other, and that's why part of this boundary does go over onto the North Dakota side to signify that this is a multi-state process that we're attempting to start here. So it's definitely going to be interesting to see how different sides of the river implement different strategies. But it's definitely something that there's a lot of interest with in the City of Fargo Water Treatment side as well, because at the end of the day, again, we treat a lot of the same water, and that water's changing. So over time, if there's mitigation strategies, extra monitoring that we can implement, anything that we can do to track that change and then see if we can mitigate some of those more negative ones and keep the good ones that we like to see around, that's beneficial to the entire community, not just Moorhead and Dilworth.
Oh, go ahead, Paul. Concerning the surface water that you're testing and stuff like that, you know, several years ago, we decided that we decided to put the buffer program in there to eliminate all the chemicals coming off the fields, but of course, half the fields, or probably even more, have drain tile in, and they pump it directly into the ditches. So does that affect you? I mean, are you against the buffer program, or against drain tile? Does that hurt your program, or...
That's a good question. It's not clear if it harms it or not. There's actually been no specific studies to see if there's a chemical change due to drain tile. It is something that we checked around to see if there was any white paper studies that showed that. The one that we were able to find was from about 2009 to 2011 that looked at the volume change, looking at it from a flood perspective. And one of the interesting things from the proceeds of that study was that drain tile does not adversely increase the potential for floods. It actually kind of buffers that water flow, and it actually helps a little bit, which was really interesting to see. So from that perspective, you know, it is a benefit to the river. As far as the chemical side of things, there really haven't been a whole lot of studies on that, so I don't really have a say one way or the other on that one.
I've always wondered whether, I mean, we put the buffer program in to keep the chemicals off, and then we dump it, put in drain tile and dump it right into the ditch, so bypass the buffer program, so...
Yep. And overall, the buffer program in my eyes has been a hugely successful process, because, again, it does provide for that natural scrubbing potential for those little strips of wetland. Those have been shown over time to be great sponges for nutrient loads that could otherwise get to the river, and they've been hugely beneficial in mitigating some of those excess nutrients from going into the Red River. So the buffer program has been hugely successful.
Yeah, because I think we're pretty much 99% complete with our buffer program, so...
Yep.
Hi. Just want to... Few questions have been active for much of my life with soil and water conservation and then with the Buffalo Red. So do you, in your strategies, your 48 activities that you were talking about, do you coordinate? Like, are you part of the working group with... do you coordinate, like, are you part of the working group with One Watershed, One Plan and the Buffalo Red? Or how does Morehead in its strategies work with the other partners that you mentioned? You know, how do you bring that together? Do you all, do you reach out to these groups and sort of have a, you know, conversation and layout plans that you kind of work toward? Or do you understand what I'm asking?
Yes, I, I think I do, yes. Ways that we can collaborate with, like the Buffalo Red River Watershed Conservancy District, for example, is they're, they had a One Watershed, One Plan document that came out in end of 2020, I think. Morehead Public Service was made aware of that planning process. And we had actually submitted comments at that time for things that we saw specifically in the river that we thought would be beneficial to be in their plan as well. And we did submit that and we did actually have those comments implemented into the final plan. So this type of an intake protection plan is an opportunity to kind of funnel the focus for things that are mutually in each item. And it's something that MPS plans on reaching out to these agencies and seeing if there's a, a desire and an appetite to collaborate on some of these action items that are mutual between them. This one more listed those items, not to be, not to be duplicative, but to kind of funnel the focus if there's three or four different plans that may have something very similar. This is an option for us to kind of recognize that, hey, turbidity mitigation, for example, is something that's heavily recognized in the upper Red River watershed area. And then if there's multiple agencies looking at trying to tackle that, this is an opportunity to kind of funnel that focus, recognize that there's a lot of partners that could work together collaborative, collaboratively on this. And then again, like we'd mentioned before, it also opens the door for grant funding opportunities to help fund that process.
Okay, very good. With that, well, I'll just mention too, obviously, river keepers you must be involved with. And then just that awareness, and I'm guessing you have it with urban conservation within Clay Soil and Water, you know, and some of the programs, you know, we're trying to do within the city. You talked about what, I'm, I'm curious, do you often draw from the aquifers, either the one in Morehead or out in the Buffalo Red? Or is that just, how often did they, I know that's not part of surface water, but how often do you draws off those? That's more a curious question.
Good question. It's really case dependent on the quality of the Red River. That's one of the main drivers that we use to determine if we need to pump groundwater to basically dilute out what contaminants we may see that are naturally occurring. So that's where, you know, a big part of our strategy at Morehead Public Service is to use as much surface water as we can so that we can minimize the groundwater use, using that as a, basically a piggy bank for those not so rainy days. Because at the end of the day, the, the Red River is not that reliable of a water source. Over time, it has been shown to have contamination issues, low flow issues. Back in the 30s, it ran stagnant and dry for a significant period of time. So part of our strategy long-term is to minimize our groundwater use to the extent that we can to save it for those not so rainy days. And if we can implement some quality maintenance measures that allow for that, it would be hugely beneficial long-term. But depending on the day, a lot of times, we're pumping about 20% of our annual flows through the groundwater from either the Morehead Aquifer or the Buffalo Aquifer.
This is going to be my next question.
Yep.
Okay, I'm just curious about that. And then are there areas that, and maybe this comes more through MPCA and all that, but that within your, your intake area that you're concerned about, on impaired waters that exist? And I, you mentioned turbidity and, you know, I think that's probably the biggest one, correct? But, you know, the overall condition of the river and its sources right now, how do you feel about that?
Well, I, I know that with the most recent RAPS report from the MPCA, a lot of the upper Red River watershed is considered impaired, either due to turbidity or nutrient loading or E. coli that's naturally occurring. There's a lot of the tributaries that have similar issues, depending on which direction you go to. And that's part of the state's strategy is to first identify what those impairments are and then what long-term management strategies can they implement to essentially help mitigate or, or clean those up. So there's, there's a lot of work to be done. The Red River is not called the Blue River for a reason. So there's a lot of implementation and a lot of focus that is turning to surface water because there is that desire, not only in the Red River watershed, but other areas in Minnesota as well, to keep those areas as clean as possible.
I certainly appreciate your work in moving forward with the plan, so both of you.
Yeah, Ms. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the county send a letter of support for the city of Morehead Surface Water Intake Protection Plan and ask Mr. Larson to prepare one.
Thank you. I just, I want to piggyback on Commissioner, or Paul's questions to you. So the, the water, you know, so you have your water plant that's in Morehead and you bring water in from the river. And you said there's times that you have to divert that and use the aquifer because of contaminants or what have you. Is there, are there particular types of contaminants that you're going to be looking at? There are some things that your plant can handle in terms of treating, right? And so those things aren't as, they're still an issue, but they're not a, an issue that you can't deal with from the standpoint of our residents' drinking water standards, right? So are there, are there certain things, you know, I know you mentioned, you know, in your comments early on, you mentioned pesticides and those types of things, you know, and we talked about different things. You know, there's an awful lot of phosphorus that goes into the river, but that, that goes, that comes in from the very start of the river, all the way to, you know, so, so it's pretty hard to us to control the phosphorus just in one area when it's already in the river before we even get to this yellow line. Mercury is another one. You know, we talk about different things that's just natural within our rivers. So I'm just curious if there was, if there's certain things you're looking for more so than others?
Yes, that's an excellent question. There are a lot of things that we're monitoring on a regular basis as far as naturally occurring and other types of contaminants that we see. Things that are naturally occurring that we are able to effectively remove with our centralized softening portion of the plant. Those include heavy metals like the mercury that you had mentioned. That's a longstanding recognition in the Red River that there is mercury content in there. We are able to effectively remove that in our softening process. We drive the pH high enough where it basically turns it back into a solid and precipitates out. So it's a very effective process. That one's able to be completely mitigated along with the arsenic from the groundwater that's naturally occurring in this area too. We're able to effectively remove that. Other things that we see that could be potential issues include things that are called total dissolved solids. Those are salts that are dissolved in the water and that drives up treatment costs because we have to add more chemicals to effectively remove them. So things like sulfates, chlorides, things like that, that are shown within the, the source water assessment to be increasing as the decades roll on, those are going to be increased concerns for us because with the centralized softening portion of our plant, you can remove them up to an extent. But if there's more content to remove, you need larger basins to precipitate those out of solution. So we're able to handle a lot, don't get me wrong, but we are seeing that they're increasing over time and it's becoming more of a management strategy shift at the plant. So like sulfates and chlorides are things that we're watching very closely. Nitrites and phosphorus are being watched very closely too. That going back to Commissioner Krabenhoff's comments about the One Watershed, One Plan documents, looking at things like turbidity and nutrient loading removal. Part of our comments that we had put into the One Watershed, One Plan document was to tackle, preferentially tackle the nutrient loading first and then the turbidity second, even though in the draft plan that we commented on, they were reversed. The reason for that is with the Red River being so turbid, having so much dirt floating in the water, it's actually stopping the sunlight from producing enough photosynthesis where we have algae growth due to those nutrients present. So there's a lot of strategies that we're looking to implement that could be very easy to implement. And, you know, it's just a matter of the timing.
Some final one.
Yeah.
PPHOZ, is that an issue for Morehead?
Good question. We've been working with the Minnesota Department of Health and the Army Corps of Engineers for about six years now on PPHOZ monitoring. At this time, even with the new levels that just came out from the EPA going down to that four parts per trillion instead of 70 parts per trillion, we do not have anything that's above those limits. For all of the, the studies and the samplings that we've done in the past, almost all of them have been non-detect for the source water, which is excellent for us. Another great thing is if in the future, if we did have something that introduced them with our recent filter upgrade that we did in 2020, we would be able to effectively remove them. So we're already kind of positioning ourselves to be able to take those out.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, one question on that map, excuse me, Paul. On that map, when I look at the little indentations on the bottom, why is that, why do we just go straight across and?
I think, I think that might be related to the diversion. If, I noticed the same thing. You're talking about this area here?
No, down the bottom, way down the bottom of that map. Why did we go up and then come back down again?
Oh, on the yellow?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chair, as mentioned before, again, that part one, a lot of science went into, again, that yellow line is that 24-hour travel time to the intake.
Okay.
So again, we're probably not seeing ditch systems and, but I don't have the specific details, but those scientists really studied it. And that's, that's how they came up with that yellow line that shows the 24-hour time of travel. Doesn't make sense when you see that high flow of a river there. And it doesn't make sense as far as that, that straight line. You know, water doesn't do a straight line. So there, there might be some flaws and maybe we'll get that updated in 10 years. But two years ago, those scientists came up with that.
I'll wait for that answer then, okay. All right, go ahead, Paul.
Just one quick question. We were talking about pollutants or whatever, you know, or factors of, of health hazards. Curious because I have a discussion to the townships and the counties to the north of us on arsenic. And I'm just curious, do you measure what comes out of the aquifer here in Morehead and out of the Buffalo Red where you draw? Just curious of, kind of what the levels are. Obviously, you take them out when you treat the water, but I was just curious about the sources.
Yeah, good question. On average, when we grab our samples, a lot of times it's more than 10 parts per billion. Sometimes depending on the time of year and if the Buffalo Aquifer's level has changed a little bit, surprisingly, that makes those arsenic levels change with it. We've had samples come in as high as 35 parts before. And for, for a little bit of context, in the late 90s, when the, the new arsenic rule came out, the level went from 50 down to 10. So there, there is a high naturally occurring content out in the Buffalo Aquifer. And I think the further north you go with groundwater in the area, especially along the east side of the Red River, I think it gets higher as you go north, so.
How about the one in town?
In town, there is next to nothing, which is great. The, the Morehead Aquifer that's beneath, pretty much right underneath the water plant, it's about 200 feet down there. There's a lot of confining clay that covers it and there's really not a whole lot that can get to that one. That one's, that one's locked up pretty tight.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second, to write a letter of support for this program. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post, very good. Passes. We'll get that to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Okay, request to approve or reduce retainage to 2%. Justin, you got that one?
Yes, good morning. So my first item today is I'm here to request to reduce retainage to 2% on the LRIP job in Dilworth. So this is SAP 014-594-001. So this was approved at Dilworth City Council last night. The contractor's at about 98% complete for the project and by contract specs, they can request to reduce retainage.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second. To reduce the retainage to 2%. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
The second item I have is to approve the dust control quote from Glacier, Glacier Dust Control. So last Thursday, we received two quotes, one from Glacier and one from Knife River. The price received is $1.56 per gallon. This is up about 17 cents per gallon from last year. So annually, the contract is about 100,000 gallons between county spots. And then this also through Glacier, the residents are able to apply for dust control. And then that way, we can get a map put together and know where all the spots are.
Is this the same company we had last year?
Yep. So this, this would be the fourth year in a row that Glacier has done it and they're a local company and we've worked really, really well with them.
Thank you.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second to approve the contract for dust control. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
The next item I have is an approval to, for a response letter from the claim from Dennis Drew's Incorporated. So this is the county's second response. So I've met with both the county attorney's office and state aid regarding this claim. So the biggest difference between this response and the previous one is the dollar amount and the amount of equipment that the contractor is claiming that was idle. So Dennis Drew's initial claim was for 391,000. In my proposed response letter, it would be 122,946.99.
Mr. Chair, I, I think just to, just to remind people, this was, this was, you know, because of delays that were, that were caused by the inability to move some lines in a timely manner. This, this part, or Justin brought this up to our highway tracking committee and we, we agreed with this. We do, we will however, be asking our attorneys to go after damages as a result of that in, in the same amount, whatever is determined to be the final amount, so.
Yep.
Just, just to, it has been talked about in our highway tracking, so.
Just to kind of piggyback off that, I have been working with the state. There is someone down in St. Paul that has dealt with this on a state project. So I've been putting them in contact with the county attorney's office as far as process goes and what they've kind of seen from their end.
And this, this does meet with the MINDOT rates, right?
Correct.
We're using the MINDOT rates to determine our counter offer.
Yep, that.
Our position, not.
Both MINDOT equipment rates and eight hours per day for the 24 days they were idle. And that follows the contract specs and the MINDOT specs.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if there's nothing else, I would, I would move that we approve the letter.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second to approve the letter for a request of 122,494.99. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And then I'd like to, a lot of data.
Gabe, you want to do your report?
Yeah, like, Gabe and I would like to give just a little flood update at what we're kind of seeing throughout the county.
Glad to hear that.
I guess I can go first from a highway department perspective. So we have four different crews running right now cleaning ditches. So one near the Glendon area, one up by Felton, one down in Comstock, and then one kind of in the Morehead area.
Excuse me, you say four different crews. What do they use, do we have that many bulldozers or?
Nope. So we have one backhoe, that one is the one in Comstock. And then we have three outside contractors that we hired.
Okay, very good. Go ahead. Thank you.
And we try to utilize whoever's closest. So up by Felton, we have a local guy that's always dug the ditch is the one doing it.
Okay.
Perfect. And then as far as the rest of the county goes and the rest of our flood, flooding efforts, we did put on the county website a bunch of flood information. We also have a flood hotline number that people can call, residents of Clay County can call if they have questions about getting materials, sandbags, contractors that can provide them with sand, things of that nature. We also have the highway department, Terry over at the highway department keeps a up-to-date traffic map, a road closure map for the county on the county website. So townships received a letter back on April 4th, just kind of advising them that. So townships received a letter back on April 4th, just kind of advising them that if they have township roads that go under to, to notify the, the highway department, they will update that on the map. This map is also linked with the city of Moorhead's traffic map. So when Moorhead starts closing some streets, it'll appear on the county map also. And then the other, kind of the other main thing on the, on the county website, other than links to a lot of different National Weather Service, river gauges, things like that, is information about First Link, which is who we use to organize volunteers. If anyone out in the county needs help with sandbagging efforts, filling sandbags, they're advised to call First Link at 211 and request help. And then First Link will take out of their pool of volunteers who have called it at 211 also and, and connect them with the property owner to organize sandbagging efforts. And then beginning this morning, actually, down at the self-storage building of the counties, we, we are using the sends to serve crew to fill a small amount of sandbags for the city of Moorhead and then also Clay County. So we have a reserve that is, can be used if the highway department needs any. Moorhead's looking at just over 3,000 sandbags. They use, some of their areas where roads go under pretty much every year, they have some junction boxes and pedestals and things like that that they generally sandbag around. So that effort should probably be done by the end of the week, I would imagine. We're going to leave the sandbagging equipment up there in the event we should need, need to produce any more. And last, well, earlier, I guess, this week, no, last week, Justin and I met with the Buffalo Red watershed district and we did have a, a meeting that we're going to be starting Tuesdays and Thursdays. We'll have a, a morning meeting, just a briefing with the watershed districts, both Buffalo Red and Wild Rice, the sheriff's office, the highway department, emergency management. And anyways, the Buffalo Red did update us, update us this morning that they do have five crews out clearing watershed ditches beginning yesterday. They did note that water is starting to move quite a bit down in Wilken County. Last night, we did go to the watershed board meeting and just noted down in the southern part of the county, the Barnesville area, pretty much holly on down, really, the fields are really starting to open up there. Looks way different than the northern end of the county. This morning, I took a drive up by Felton and Georgetown and most of the fields are still pretty, pretty snow covered there. The National Weather Service yesterday did give a river prediction level for the next seven days based off of flood gauges, which will start to operate now that we're getting into the melt. But by the weekend, the south branch of the Buffalo River, the Buffalo River and the Red River should enter moderate flood stage. The briefing we got from the National Weather Service this morning was they're cautiously optimistic about runoff and overland flooding in Clay County. So we're sitting in a better position than the, the west side of the river is. But by this weekend, the south branch of the Buffalo at the Saban gauge is projected to get to 15 feet, so that's just into moderate, moderate flood, flood level. The main branch, the gauge at Dilworth, which is north of Dilworth by Concordia Church there, that's predicted to hit 22 feet between Saturday and Sunday. And then the Red River sometime between Saturday and Sunday is going to enter moderate and that should be at between 25 and 28 feet. So we'll start to see some, some of our lower roads, kind of those problem areas, they'll start going under. I think Justin and I had mentioned this morning that County Road 10, one area of County Road 10 has some water on it now. So in the next few days, things are really going to start to flow and we'll have some of those traffic impacts. So any, any questions for myself or Justin?
I just have one. Gabe, I know you mentioned you're filling sandbags for certain needs. How about the empty sandbag quantities that you might have available?
Yeah, so I, I can't speak to the number that Moorhead has. I know they have a significant amount. And as far as the county goes, we're sitting at about 100,000 sandbags. And I did, I did send a letter out and I've talked to many of the townships that are kind of commonly affected by that and made, offered sandbags up to them. I have delivered some sandbags already, small amounts, but, and then the townships can do with those as they please.
Based on the current numbers, you're satisfied with the?
Yes, absolutely. I think we're sitting very good on, on those counts.
Thank you.
Justin, you said you started cleaning ditches yesterday?
Yep.
Hey, just to let you know that I got a call yesterday already about thanking us for doing the ditches, so thank you for your work on that. Go ahead, Paul.
And just for everybody here on the board and, yeah, in the public. Just wanted to thank you too, last night, you know, in one week's time, when we had our discussion about communicating with, you know, the Buffalo Red, in one week, I guess it was, Gabe and Justin were both at the meeting last night with Commissioner Mojo and I, and they had problem solve. Communication was really good and you already explained what you're doing and how you're doing it. But really appreciate that effort of communication and I, you know, I think everybody was really pleased last night, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything further? Well, thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, we're still almost on time here, just a few minutes late, but our next thing is our annual department update or continuation of it.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners.
Good morning, Rhonda.
Okay. Jackie's going to help me.
And first of all, thank you for taking care of that situation I had this week with your resident and stuff, so.
Yes, you're welcome. All right. Good morning. We are here for part two of our department update. We have one more presentation next week. Today, we're going to be talking about our licensing programs, disability services, and our home and community-based waiver programs. So we have Jessica Mickelson and Holly Warner here. They're our experts and I'm going to turn it over to them and I'll run the PowerPoint, so. All right.
Well, good morning. As Rhonda said, my name's Jessica Mickelson. I'm the supervisor for the Licensing and Disability Services Division. So my plan today is to just kind of go through a brief overview of my unit, provide some updates from 2022. And I also thought I would take this opportunity to provide a brief overview or update from our ARPA initiatives that were implemented last year for family childcare. So just to kick it off here, we'll start with licensing. So we have one adult foster care licenser in my unit. In Clay County, we have a total of 188 beds available. That includes 68 beds for family adult foster care, 11 for corporate child foster care, and 109 for corporate adult foster care. In 2022, we opened three new adult foster care licenses and ended up closing 14 due to either inactivity compliance issues or the license holder moved out of the county. For child foster care, we have two licensers and one of them, Gail Burnside, will actually be coming to board on May 9th and providing a little bit more overview regarding child foster care in Clay County. She's coming that day in recognition of Foster Parent Appreciation Month. But just a brief overview, currently, we have 17 relative child foster care homes with eight in application, and we have 36 non-relative child foster care homes with 14 in application. So just in comparison from last year, we are down seven beds, but the majority of those that were closed were relatives, and that's pretty typical for the relative foster site to close once the placement is moved out of their home. Let's see, family childcare, we have two licensers. They also provide support to our adult foster care licenser and assist with some of the licensing activities for the corporate sites. We currently have 139 family childcare homes with 10 in application. In comparison, last year, we had 123. So we've seen a pretty good increase in the number of family childcare homes in the past year. We've also partnered with Creating Community Consulting through a grant that we received in partnership with Clay County and West Central Initiative to promote childcare in our area. They are working on the development of a new childcare center, which will be located in Moorhead with the goal of having 128 childcare slots. They're also working on various other initiatives, and I did bring a packet here that I'll leave with Jackie for anybody that wants to grab it and kind of review and kind of get a more in-depth overview of what Creating Community Consulting is working on. Another area our licensers are working on to promote childcare is special family childcare. It's a new licensing option that the Department of Human Services made available in 2021. It's licensed similarly to family childcare, however, care is provided outside of the license holder's home, so it can be in a commercial setting. We've seen some assisted livings open up a special family childcare areas like that. And then just regarding our ARPA initiatives, so we had requested some funding to promote marketing, or for marketing to promote family childcare in Clay County. So far, we've partnered with off-the-wall advertising. We've developed a few new brochures. We've participated in a digital marketing campaign as well as a social marketing campaign. Our licensers have attended various community events. We're advertising on Spuds TV and in the Moorhead Area Public Schools Kids Source. And we've also participated in a collaborative mailing that was mailed out to all of the rural residents in Clay County. Another initiative is compensating providers who hold spots for foster care children. And during the past year, since we received the ARPA funding, we've had three providers participate in that incentive. We've also developed a mentor program, so we've identified five experienced family childcare providers to serve as mentors to both new and more experienced providers. They participate in our orientation process and then just provide support ongoing when various questions and issues may arise. The primary focus though is with new providers. We've also initiated a referral bonus for current providers who refer any new applicants. We've had several people apply that were referred by a current provider. We've asked that they maintain active enrollment for one year, so we don't anticipate any of that funding to go out until probably June, July at the earliest. But I think so far, we've got at least three that we feel will be able to participate in that incentive. We've also waived all childcare licensing fees for the past year. We're providing free training for our family childcare providers. So far, we've had two trainings and then we have our third scheduled this month. We are providing an incentive to anyone who applies for an infant and toddler license. However, we have not had anybody apply for that yet, so we're still hoping, talking with people when they, when they come in to apply. And we're also, we've worked to improve our orientation with the goal of increasing attendance. And then we've had two providers change their hours and are now offering evening care. So this funding was allocated in May of 2022, and so far, we've seen a pretty significant increase in new applicants as well as attendance at orientation. So for the disability side of my unit, I have 1.5 adult and disability intake workers. So that 0.5 worker was a new position added last May. This has allowed us to eliminate the backup rotation that was previously used when the primary intake worker was out of the office for whatever reason. So it's allowed us to eliminate that rotation and then it's also allowed us to improve our response time to inquiries when we're getting calls or emails for people requesting services. So in 2021, our intake workers responded to 1,097 inquiries and in 2022, they had 13 intakes completed.
And maybe if I could just add on this particular piece, the added 0.5 position, it was actually one full-time position that we added funded under ARPA. 0.5 of that was for this intake process and the other 0.5 was for min choices, which Jessica will talk about. But the ARPA funding was approved through 2023. So when we work on the 2024 budget area, this will be a, a position that I'll be putting on to talk about for 2024. So Rhonda, put that plug in there. Thank you.
Another area in my unit is special needs basic care, so we have one full-time care coordinator, and we just added a variable hour person to assist with the special needs basic care caseload. So we contract with Ucare to provide care coordination to their members. As of January 2023, Ucare is the only health plan in Clay County providing special needs basic care. There used to be two health plans, so when it was reduced to just one, all of the members are now enrolled in Ucare, which resulted in a pretty drastic increase in our caseload size. And we do share this with public health, so each, public health and social services has around that 350 to 360 members providing care coordination to Ucare members at this time. So just to compare, in 2021, our average caseload per month was 112 members. Last year, it was 132, and we're currently sitting at 361 members. So in order to kind of meet that need, we've added additional administrative support. So we're getting more support through our case aids and office support, and then we added a variable hour person. But that'll be another area that'll probably need to be looked at for a more permanent solution.
What's, what's causing the increase?
Well, it was the fact that there's only one health plan in Clay County now that provides special needs basic care. So the members used to be split pretty evenly between Health Partners and Ucare, and Health Partners did not respond to the RFP for special needs basic care for this year. And so Ucare is the only option. So anyone who's eligible for SMBC is automatically enrolled in Ucare. And so since we have the contract to provide care coordination to their members, it was kind of automatic that we accepted all of those folks, so. And we're working through it. So and public health has worked really hard to, to kind of distribute their caseloads to, you know, be able to provide that increased support and meet the demand.
And currently, under that program with that contract with Ucare, in 2022, our revenue was about 320,000 for the work that we're doing. But again, in 2023, as you can see, that caseload has increased and they are proposing a new rate structure. So we're trying to work with them on the higher caseload and the rate structure and again, hopefully, we'll have some problem solving to do with that for 2024, but.
Did I understand you say that the public health is still the same portfolio also? So probably same for months now? Mm-hmm. And I think they expected to go up to 1,095 by the time all the members, once we, because they're assigned per month. So I think once we get everybody assigned, which should be happening by the end of June or early July, we're looking at over 1,000 members that will be providing care coordination to between social services and public health.
Jessica, you, you've given a good report and I want to focus a little bit on, on the ARPA funds that, that the board had provided. Certainly, childcare is incredibly important in a lot of different ways in Clay County, from economic development to just the need of families to have it. I know there's some discussion about centers going on. Those are things that are not licensed through the county, right?
Correct.
So, you know, although they're good, we have very little say in those at the county level. Obviously, a center that can handle 180 will, will certainly improve the lack of availability more so than what we can do providing eight to 10 spots in a home. But our focus through ARPA has been to try to assist in the family daycare operations.
Right, yes, since that's the area that we license and work with.
Right. And so do you want, can you tell us where you are with the ARPA funds and maybe what areas that you focused on? I know we talked about the elimination of the licensing fees and all these other things. And what, what have you, what do you feel has attracted? what, what have you, what do you feel has attracted both people to stay in, in the business and then also recruiting?
Well, for recruitment, we really focused early on as soon as we received the funding with marketing. And that portion of the budget is pretty much gone. So we really kind of hit the, I mean, ran with that, just to kind of get the word out there. We needed materials as well, which we really had never developed before. The ones that we had were kind of outdated and just, you know, didn't look that great, I guess. So we focused on that so that our staff, when they are out talking to people, they have the tools that they need that they can share, you know, and help to engage with people and get them to focus on it. And so really, marketing has been one of our primary areas that we have focused on. And two, just, you know, the ongoing, you know, meeting the needs of our current providers. Providing that mentorship was very helpful. We've received a lot of positive feedback about that. The free training, just, I really think everything that we've doing, we're doing. And just the outreach too, that the licensers have had with kind of talking to providers about this, really, you know, that's part of the conversation is we need you and, you know, your, you know, area and what you do for the community is so important, so we're trying to engage that way as well.
In this last week, the governor was here talking about things at the state legislature and I think maybe Paul will touch a little bit on it, he was able to go there, but, you know, I think there any, if there's some areas within legislation that's going on that can be beneficial, that's being proposed or whatever, I think it would be important for you to keep us up to date on, on those things and areas that run, there were things that we could support moving forward. With that, I, I happened to see on a, on a local social media page, there was quite a bit of discussion regarding, not the centers, but providers and, and it seemed that they had, there were several of them that wished they could have been there to express things that would benefit family daycare facility, childcare facilities. And so I'm, I'm curious as to, you know, with their involvement and those that are doing it, what, are there areas that we've invited them to give input on, on, on things that are, I know there are some things that they said that, that they'd like to be involved with the legislative issues. But are, are there things outside of the legislative issues that Clay County could be listening to them on that could, I mean, they're, they're, they're boots on the ground, you know?
Right.
And, and so, you know, I, I think it's important for us to hear from them.
Yeah, we've done a survey and I know DHS, who oversees the licensing efforts that are done at the county level too, often puts information out. I mean, they, I just had a provider the other day tell me that they get so much information from DHS that it can be a little overwhelming. But I know DHS is trying to keep providers as updated as possible and they send surveys to our providers too all the time. Definitely, though, it's something that we could do more at a local level, I think, and hold our own, you know, roundtable discussion and really, you know, have a, a good conversation about it. And we, we do have a training coming up in April, so that might be a good opportunity to utilize that time when we've got them, when we've got their attention and their time already.
And lastly, I, I do want to say, you know, I'm part, part of the ARPA committee and we, we have very limited dollars left on that ARPA fund that's available. But obviously, still childcare is way up there on the list of things that we, we need to target the best that we can, so if, if you're running low, now is, now is the time to maybe let that ARPA group know that, you know, and I, and again, I think our focus needs to be on, on what we license.
Right.
Being the, you know, the in-home providers.
Well, and that was part of the reason too with applying for the grant for creating community consulting, because we knew that their focus would be more on the center. So we really feel that we're kind of hitting both areas by, by doing that, but.
Thank you.
So just my last slide here, the last program area that I supervise is Min Choices and Rhonda kind of already touched on this, but we have two and a half initial assessors. So that new 0.5 intake position that was added last May, when she is not providing intake coverage, she assesses with Min Choices assessments. So we have two and a half initial assessors and three staff who complete reassessments. And I'll explain kind of the difference here, but just for those of you who might not be familiar with Min Choices, it's a web-based tool that we use to create person-centered care plans and assessments to assist people with long-term or chronic care needs to help them make decisions about services and supports to help meet their needs so that they're able to maintain living in the community. It's also the tool that we use to determine someone's eligibility for services. So our Min Choices assessors are still operating under the federal PMI emergency, which is set to expire on May 11th. So that has allowed us to complete assessments remotely, although we are transitioning to completing quite a few of them in person. But we were given a six-month transition time from the state before we have to transition to all assessments being conducted in person.
Is that going to cause a problem when you go back to the way it was? I mean, you kind of get this hybrid, if you will, right?
Right, yes, we're doing definitely a hybrid method. You know, it's a lot, it's very efficient for us to be able to conduct these assessments remotely or virtually. We still want to, at some point, get in the person's home and assess their natural environment. And typically, we need to meet with them to do the paperwork anyways. But this really cuts down on travel time. If we, you know, drive out to Barnesville and the person isn't home, they forgot about their appointment or, you know, ditched us, decided they didn't want to do it that day. That really takes up a lot of the assessor's time, so we have found that we're quite a bit more efficient when we're able to do it this way. However, we still really like to get into the homes.
Do you feel the state over time will give you that variability or do you think they're just going to go back to the way it was?
For reassessments, for, so for someone who we've already been in their home and determined their eligibility for a certain program, they will allow us for the disability waivers, so for Holly's program areas, to complete assessments remotely. Two years in a row, the third year, we need to be in the home and seeing the person face-to-face. For initial assessments, no, those will return to strictly being completed face-to-face starting in November.
Thank you.
And that makes sense. I mean, we hadn't met the person, so it really, it, it's, it's appropriate. The other thing with Min Choices is that DHS is launching a new, a new online tool that our staff will use to conduct their assessments and complete support plans. As of today, there are over 40 known issues with the new software. We were actually supposed to launch this yesterday and we found out on Friday that they are postponing the launch, so all of our staff have completed all of the training and we were pretty prepared for it. However, with each assessment taking an additional 50 to 100 minutes because of all of the known issues, it was pretty wise for the state to make that determination to delay the launch, so. And then just a breakdown, so in 2021, we completed 571 initial assessments, so that's 571 people who called Clay County to see if they were eligible for a program or were referred by maybe a healthcare provider, a mental health practitioner, indicating that their needs were not currently being met. In 2022, we completed 583 initial assessments. Of that 583, 177 of those people were referred for mental health reasons, 44 for chemical health, 88 had developmental disabilities, 11 were referred for COVID-related reasons and 48 required the use of an interpreter. And I just started tracking that data last year, so I don't have it for 2021, but I'll have it going forward. And then reassessments, so anyone who has an initial assessment and is found eligible for a program has to have an annual reassessment to maintain their eligibility. So in 2021, we completed 541 reassessments and last year, 571. So you can see the numbers continue to, to grow year after year. That was all I had. Is there any other questions for me?
No, thank you very much, but it sounds like you've got a lot of people in the program.
Yes, we do. Holly will touch on that next.
Oh, I see, okay.
My unit kind of does the intake and assessment and then once they're found eligible, then they switch over to Holly's program.
Okay.
All right, good morning. I'm Holly Warner. I supervise our home and community base and disability services here at Clay County. So for my unit, I have 16 staff in my unit. 14 of those staff are case managers and two are case aides. My case managers, you know, they provide services to people and their families focusing on person-centered planning, referrals for services, monitoring services, coordinating and advocating for them to receive services in the community and those services could be waiver services or other community resources. The people that they serve can be of any age, so we're talking little, little, all the way through the end of life and are eligible for either a Medicaid waiver or what we call Rule 185 case management, and that is developmental disabilities case management. So, and as you'll recall, we did add two new case manager positions in this last year. So I had one of those case managers start at the end of November and one started in the beginning of January. So that brought us up to 14 case managers. In addition to that, I have two case aides who provide tremendous support to my case managers as well as Jessica's Min Choices assessors. They do a lot of the behind-the-scenes paperwork, scheduling things, getting mailings out, tracking all of the things that kind of keep us running on a day-to-day basis, so we certainly appreciate their work as well. Minnesota has four disability waivers and I'll get into that in a little bit, but to be eligible for a disability waiver, the person needs to be a Minnesota resident, a Minnesota Medicaid, have a disability and be certified disabled. And then they need to have a service, receive services as an alternative to living in an institution. So that may mean like an institution such as a nursing home or a hospital. As well as those eligibility requirements, each waiver has some individual requirements as well. So our Minnesota Disability Waivers fund services to help people live in as independently as possible in the community, so preventing institutional stays as well as being safe and having, you know, that community integration. Our four disability waivers are the Brain Injury Waiver, our CAC waiver, which is Community Alternatives Care, our CADDI waiver, which is Community Access for Disability Inclusion, and our Developmental Disability waivers. So each waiver has a level of care that the person must meet to be eligible for that program. And then I did just kind of indicate our current number of consumers on each waiver, so as you can see our CADDI waiver, we have just about 550 consumers on that program. With our Developmental Disability waiver would be the next highest enrollment.
Maybe, and maybe I'll just add a comment on this with the, again, as Holly said, these are Medicaid waiver programs and if you recall, when we've come to you before asking for added positions in this program area, we've typically said to you, they will fund themselves. So the work that the staff do in providing the case management, they claim their work against the Medicaid waiver and then we're reimbursed for that. In 2022, we were close to $900,000 in revenue that the staff earned based on their work with this population. So just to give you a bit of context for that, so. It's one of our most, most highly funded programs that kind of support the staffing pattern that we need.
When you talk about assisting them and whatever, you're talking about money or are you talking about housing or what do you?
We're talking about coordinating services, so the person, let's just say, for example, is eligible for the CADDI waiver and they may live in a group home. So my staff authorized the funding to pay for that group home, which is the support that they need to live in the community rather than in a nursing home. And then they're responsible to make sure those services are meeting standards, are abiding BARI laws, meeting what the person's needs are and what they desire to, to have each day. And in addition to that, someone could live in their own home and receive maybe some direct care staff coming into their home to help support them as well. So they might need some help with maybe homemaking, meals, monitoring their health, getting out into the community, but live in their own home, but wouldn't be able to do that without these supports. And so my staff authorized providers to send staff into someone's home to provide that level of support.
I mean, you're telling me that you're, you're giving them support and stuff like that, like is there money involved in that too, that they get so much money a month too, or? Just all services?
All services.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so in addition to our waiver programs, we have our Rule 185 Developmental Disabilities Case Management and that is just about 100 people or so we've got on that program. This is not a, a service area where we receive any funding or reimbursement, but it's certainly an important service where our case managers are providing support to the individual or their families. And some of the program areas that they might be eligible for include maybe the Family Support Grant, which is a statewide cash grant for people under the age of 25 to, to live in their home and maybe have some disability-related needs. We also have our SILS program, our semi-independent living program, and that is similar to a waiver program, but it's county and state funds to help the person with developmental disability live in their own home. In addition to that, we do assist people who are in a nursing home under the age of 65 and want to return to the community. So we call that relocation service coordination. And I have one worker primarily who works with individuals eligible for this program, return to the community and set up services for them to do that safely. So they may return back to their home or maybe they would return from a nursing home to an assisted living facility or a foster home. Our caseload sizes continue to increase. Just some data in regards to that, in 2015, our average caseload size was 59 and this year in 2023, our average caseload is about 62, give or take a few, and that's relatively close. However, I just noted that we've added three staff in that timeframe. So just kind of supports the increased need and, and case managers to support our increase in this program area. We do continue to see the complexities of the population that we serve continue to increase as well as the struggle with finding direct care staff to come into people's homes or to work in those group homes to support these individuals. Like Jessica mentioned, my case managers are also operating under the federal PMI emergency, which is allowing them to conduct the required face-to-face visits remotely. That will be coming to an end November 1st. So we've got a six-month transition period for that as well and we will need to go back to conducting those face-to-face visits in person by November 1st. We are certainly transitioning to that now and doing a lot of those visits in person now, but some people still prefer to meet virtually. And again, I just wanted to touch on the Min Choices revision, what Jessica had mentioned earlier. My case managers will also need to be a part of this new tool. We will do our support plans in revision and that is a part of just identifying their services and the supports the person needs that they'll receive in their home. And then lastly, DHS has been working for a couple of years now on a project called Waiver Reimagine. This is where DHS is working to move our four disability waivers into two and working on individual budgets for the person. So this will happen over the course of the next three years with an anticipated launch date of January 1st of 2026. date of January 1st of 2026. And so we will be working closely with DHS as that nears that launch date.
Do your case managers determine when they're not eligible for funds anymore or services?
Yep. So Jessica's staff will determine if they're no longer eligible for a waiver program. We, there's a waiver program, and then under that is a menu of services. So my staff work to identify the needs or the services to meet the person's needs. So Jessica's staff do the assessment, identify what the person needs help with. My staff come in and help them find services to meet those needs.
All right. Any questions?
In those annual reassessments that Jessica talked about, through that process, it could be that individuals would be determined ineligible based on the results of that reassessment.
Does it just reassess once a year?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Thank you. I want to go back a little bit to childcare. And it was not too long ago, Commissioner Mojo had reached out to me, and apparently there had been some conversation and questions regarding variances. I know it's, there's pros and cons to it. It's my understanding that years ago, Clay County took the position that no variances would be granted. And again, that's, that's something that is applied for to DHS. Is that correct?
So it, just to clarify, it's specifically regarding age and capacity. We do not allow for any variances. We will look at other issues.
Okay, yeah.
For age and capacity for childcare, we do not allow variances.
Right. And I guess, you know, there have been some counties who have done that. And I would like to offline learn more about, about that because I really don't know a lot about it. Certainly, there's liability issues and those types of things. But, but I think, you know, I, I think we always have to keep our all possibilities open. If you have somebody who, who's been maybe doing this for a number of years and has an excellent record, are there instances where something like that, you know, when we're, when we're really struggling to find occupancy? And if we have some people out there doing a really good job, and they're, and they're saying that they could maybe handle a couple more, shouldn't we be looking at that? I don't know, but I, but I want to learn more about that. I know we've, years ago, that was the county's position. I think there's been a number of counties who have taken a different position from that, and I don't know historically if that's caused them any problems or not. But I think all of that, you know, to put everything on the table, we really should be talking about that again.
And I think our staff, you know, for one reason we haven't supported is our family child cares that we have currently are not at full capacity. We have several providers that do have openings. I think if we ever reached that full capacity, we would definitely have to have a very, very serious discussion about this variance issue. But so that's one reason, you know, and we've talked to Katie Stock about it pretty recently too, just to get her perspective. And she supports our no variance policy at this time. However, it's definitely something that's going to be an ongoing conversation as the needs in the community changes.
Sure. Yeah. And again, I don't have a position either way. I just.
Yeah. It's definitely an important topic. It really is. And, you know, when, when families have to, you know, kind of go out of their way or maybe have their children in two different child cares, that's not a situation that we want to put people in. But we also don't want providers to be put in a situation where they feel guilted into accepting more children than what they're really comfortable caring for. And it's really a fine line as to how that's determined. And then if we have one provider who does have that experience and, you know, we're fully confident that they're able to do that, on the other hand, how would we say to another provider that might not have as much experience or that we're not, we don't have that certainty about, how do we deny that? And we just don't have a practice or a policy in place to allow that. And that's kind of why we've taken the stance of just not allowing them.
Yeah. And for all those things Jessica said, and I would add, I was supervising in that particular area when we developed that no variance for age and capacity. And we had some issues that kind of prompted that discussion. But I am aware that other counties do allow for it. It has come up recently and has prompted that conversation with our county attorney's office. I think we constantly want to revisit it. There were a couple situations that were brought to us that personally, I thought, wow, that makes a lot of sense. It is temporary. If I remember the details right, it was another child, and so it was a temporary situation. And we thought, that kind of makes sense that we would offer a variance. But then another not exact, but similar situation would come up. So we just weren't sure where to go with it. But it certainly is a piece that I think we want to continue to have a conversation about. And if there are circumstances that make sense, I don't think any of us are opposed to looking at that policy.
Sure. Yeah. And again, I, you know, if the demands are, it's kind of interesting when you, when you say that the, some of these, they're not at full capacity, but yet we hear about these demands on childcare facilities. And I, makes, makes me wonder, why aren't they at capacity? But yeah, it's, I think it's just a topic, and this goes to Commissioner Mojo had raised a question with me some time ago. I think she'd maybe heard from some providers who maybe felt that variances should be granted.
Yes.
You know, so it's a, it's a topic to continue, I guess, but.
Other questions? All right. We'll see you next week with our final part.
Thank you very much.
The rest of the story.
The rest of the story.
Thank you very much, Ron. Okay, we'll go on to committee reports. Dave, you want to start us out this week?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Herman. On the sixth, I attended a meeting with, at Micah's Mission Churches United with Pastor Sue Kesterman, Shelley Carlson, the mayor from Morehead, and Dan Molly, the city manager, were also there. We toured the grounds there. They've got a grant. They're doing some pretty impressive renovations there and some badly needed renovations to the location. So we looked at the work that's in progress at that location now. And Pastor Sue did brief us on issues, on loss of funding at Safe Haven, which is a location in Morehead for individual homeless women. A lot of these women are survivors of domestic violence. There are several, or at least three that I believe, but they described that they're on walkers or incapacitated. They're seniors. Just a lot of good work being done there. However, they've had the source of funding at that location. They've been notified that it's not going to be ongoing, and it's created some difficulties. There was no ask at this point, simply a briefing over the, the needs and the challenges that they're facing at this point. I think it's probably a discussion that's going to be ongoing, and I'll keep the, the commission here advised of anything that may come, be coming our way. Later that day, I went to a meeting with Joel Paulson, Executive Director of the Diversion Authority, and Chris Bakengard, an employee there, along with Commissioner Campbell and Steve Larson, our county administrator. We had a discussion, referenced MOUs with Holy Cross Township and some of the items that are involved in that discussion. On the seventh following day, I attended the press conference along with Gabe Tweetin, our emergency management director. The Governor Walz had it in Horn Park. Dr. Zimmerman, the county, or the city engineer, and Mayor Carlson, a couple members of the Morehead City Council were also there, along with Senator Rob Kupac, state senator. They discussed the diversion authority, the impact it's going to have on flooding in our area, some of the concerns we're looking at in the upcoming flood season. A whole lot of it focused on the improvements that have been made and are currently, the governor's approved in his budget for the Morehead issues within the city on flood mitigation that's, that's taken place. I had an opportunity to talk to the governor for a few minutes after the press conference, made him aware that we have about $30 million worth of county projects that are also part of the diversion, and indicated to him the concerns we've got for our rural Clay County citizens who still have issues they've got to deal with. And there still has to be funding for some of the diversion projects that involve giving people assistance in relocating and being properly remunerated for property that's involved. He indicated an awareness or a interest in that, and I'll be communicating with Josh Nay, one of his policy advisors, and just do some follow-up, try to keep the governor's office aware of the needs that we've got in rural Clay County and the rest of the county as this proceeds and as this legislative session proceeds. And that concludes my report.
All right. Here we go. Last Thursday, April 6th, I had my Adult Mental Health LIC committee meeting. The main thing there is that for the last little over two months, they've had surveys going out throughout the county to, to families and providers both. The responses have been terrific. They were down in the double digits last year when they did this, and this year so far, they had over 227 families respond and 75 providers. So they get a lot of feedback. It wasn't all put together and summarized yet, which they're doing now, but we did have a good hour-long discussion about the things that were being talked about. And, and on the family side of it, you know, it's time to getting into getting to see someone, lack of therapists, you know, their workforce issues all involved when it comes to public safety or health, excuse me, lack of nurses, you know, and all the things we're kind of hearing about from our departments. But May is Mental Health Month, and I believe we'll be having a presentation with a summary of these things. They can speak to them specifically when the LICs speak to us as a board. Very good conversations with that. The, that afternoon, nope, next day, excuse me, Friday morning, as part of the Food Commission, Food in the North puts on First Fridays, and the topic happened to be called Little Feats. And it was about discussion about meeting children eating needs and the obligations of parents, you know, what is it they're going to eat, when are they going to eat it? And it's up to the child whether they're going to eat and, and what they're going to eat. So can't force a little kid to eat something they don't want. But it was really a healthy discussion, talking about ways to talk in positive ways about food so that we all enjoy good nutritious food and look at it and enjoy eating it. Along with that, the Food Commission, I just want to, I'll just even hold it up. There's a little announcement here that tomorrow at, from 4:00 to 5:00 o'clock, I will be at the Roasted Railhouse Coffee House, 208 15th Street, Northeast in Dilworth. So definitely on the east side of town there, new coffee place. I along with some other food commissioners will be there for the community to just come in, have a conversation for an hour about food systems or any interest in being part of the food system, and we're chatting. So hopefully we'll, hopefully, please come and join me, and we'll see where it goes from there. Next on, let's see, that was Friday morning, and then right after that, then I, as already mentioned and well said by Jessica just previously, you know, regarding childcare, I was, I did go there with Play Karen Helleruth, and we listened to the roundtable, listened to the governor. Paul Markward, our tax commissioner, was there along with Senator Kupac, who's co-authored or at least is a sponsor on a bill for childcare. To the points well made, the roundtable was excellent. I just really appreciated all the way from the centers talking, you know, giving input to the governor, to the foundations that give low interest thrones for, you know, childcare, and just giving feedback to the governor. Well, this devil's going to be in the details, right? So I'm not going to say much more than that, other than they're advocating, you know, a large amount of money to be going out to these places, and we'll see how it plays out. The reimagine, that's what that is, right? That she left? For Morehead? Perhaps. Anyway, the Ramke Park, you know, potential, what we're doing down with the childcare center down there potentially also came up in conversation, and, you know, it could be that City of Morehead will be able to get some help from the state on that too. So we'll see where that goes. You know, he seemed to be well aware of it from the mayor and, and I, I'll just say this, mainly because Paul Markward's a good friend, but I really do think it helps having Paul Markward as a tax commissioner, talking to the governor all the time and giving more exposure to Clay County. It felt very comfortable in that room, the way they were talking back and forth, and of course, they've known each other a long time. And then yesterday, I went to the Buffalo Red Watershed Monthly Meeting, as mentioned earlier today. So Commissioner Mojo, I, and then Gabe Tweetin, the emergency coordinator, along with Justin Sorma, our hardware department. We went down there again to talk about the coordination between the county and the watershed. And once again, it was just very flawless, and, and again, they had all the pieces put together already. But it was good, I think, for us to hear it as commissioners and then also their board at the same time. The only other thing from that meeting I want to take away is that the board down there approved the restoration project, setting up a new water management district for Stony Creek. So our Project 80, which is a restoration where Hay Creek comes into the Stony Creek and that whole restoration where there's been a large amount of erosion, a lot of overland flooding. And again, if you drive by this area, it's kind of just east of Baker, it's right along the interstate, you'll see a lot, a lot of being held in that area. So just know that the management area is now been authorized, and what that means for assessments, that'll be, it depends as the project goes forward and how they go forward that. And as far as any assessments, that'll be done annually as part of their budget, you know, when assessments are made, and then we'll, there'll be a lot more conversation as it moves along. So not, so I guess what I want to bring across with that, it's the management area, they were talking about more than the specificity of what the project's going to entail in its final form. But that's everything I was part of last week.
Last week, we were concerned about the cleaning of ditches. I know the county does in County Rose, but I heard the watershed board wasn't planning on cleaning any ditches anymore. Isn't that what we discussed?
No, that was more about the snow. Yeah. Oh, they're both doing it.
Oh, the watershed board is going to do it.
Yeah, yeah. And that's what Gabe talked about a little bit this morning. They have what was, yeah, they're out active with it, working on the Lower Otter Tail coming. coming up. So that issue or that concern was up more toward the Glendon area, you know, that's the one that kind of made it, that brought about the conversation.
Yeah.
But yes, as Justin talked about, we're handling things up north, and they're kind of working with things down south.
There you go.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On April 4th, I had a highway tracking meeting, there were several items. The first item that we talked about, and we had Dr. Zimmerman from the City of Moorhead was there. There were two issues that were discussed. The first one deals with briefly what Commissioner Ebner talked about regarding Holy Cross Township, and I'll get into that in a little bit in my second report of that day, on the meeting that we had. But the discussion also, the diversion authority is going to be looking for an MOU, a memorandum of understanding, with Clay County, once the diversion project is in place, on how to deal with right-of-way issues, maintenance, those types of things on county-owned properties. I think that's, so there's an MOU, and we've looked at that several times, there's been some modifications made to it. I think Brian's, your office, has been looking at that, and from, you know, Dr. Zimmerman's professional perspective, I had asked him to take a look at the MOU too, to see if there were any things of concern that he could see that we should address, and there's a couple of minor things that he's proposing that Justin also agreed with, our engineer, and so they're going to be putting out a red line version of that for more consideration to bring back to the diversion authority, and ultimately, that'll come to this board for approval. We did spend some time then talking about the 11th Street Underpass project. That project, as you know, there's going to be two, basically two railroad bridges. The one bridge along Main Avenue, as you know it, is, will be the, that will be owned by the railroad, that will be their bridge. Right now, the railroad has taken the position that the Center Avenue Bridge or the further north bridge should be owned by either Clay County or the city, they don't want to own it. Our position is, I think, right now, is we think that they should own them both. So we'll see where that goes, but there, you know, I think MINDOT is helping work on that. I think ultimately, there could end up being a deal where we might have some sort of a dual designation on that bridge, but there needs to be a lot more information provided there in terms of what that financial, future responsibility would be. You know, you're talking about a significantly expensive bridge that only the railroad tracks goes over, you know, so we'll see where that goes. And then we did have more discussion on this Drew's claim that we gave the authority to move forward with the letter on. Then we had a little update on our five-year plan discussion regarding the HCP striping, and there's a 10% managed locally, and it's, there was a 44.7% increase due to high bids this year on the striping. There was some discussion on the North Broadway Bridge, and that's, obviously, that bridge is being torn down as we speak, I don't know, it might even be done by now, I think they were trying to expedite that because of the potential flood. And, you know, I think we've kind of had Justin send a message to, you know, the Fargo side in terms of any replacement of that, where we're at on that, in terms of both the county perspective and MINDOT. There's a wide variety and ranges of what is being considered there, anywhere from a $5 million to a $25 million bridge, and certainly, a $25 million bridge for 2,200 cars going across it a day is not something that MINDOT is interested in, nor I think Clay County, you know, I'm just speaking from my experience in this, that I don't think that will go very far, you know, from our perspective, so. And then we had a little discussion, Justin brought to our attention that there was a meeting with Senator Kupac regarding the, Glendon is looking at wanting to expand that, is it Seventh?
Seventh Street.
Seventh Street, East and West.
I attended that meeting, so.
Okay, so you'll give, good, okay. And then because of the time restrictions that we had, he also had on the agenda to talk about some new equipment, and we asked, he wasn't in any real hurry, and so we asked that to be late. So later that day, we did have this information meeting that we had with Joel Paulson and Chris Bakigard, he's the head of the engineering for the diversion authority. And currently, there's two roads, township roads, that are being proposed to be closed. And the township, you know, that's the Corps saying that they can't keep those open. And the township has taken the position that they want them to remain open. And so we had some discussion about that, and ultimately, if there's a road closure, the county could end up having some involvement in that, in taking that over. Obviously, we're, I was trying to look at ways to mitigate that, and within the plan, so it would require two bumpouts that would, the Corps doesn't like that, you know, when you're talking about a high-hazard dam. And so there's two bumpouts, and I noticed a way where I thought, well, maybe you could just make a straight line and eliminate that one bumpout where we could potentially, the county could support the township in keeping 150th Avenue open, as opposed to having them both closed. And so I basically asked Joel Paulson and Chris to submit that idea to the Corps, that I think the county, you know, is really interested in supporting the township in that regard. The other, and that would also, there's also a three-mile access road that would have to be constructed with both of these township roads being closed. And with this proposal that was suggested, it would also eliminate one mile of that access road needing to be constructed, so we, there would be some cost savings, and when Joel looked at it, he said there's overall potential cost savings for the project itself by doing that. So we'll see, I think we, you know, we, I certainly felt it was important to listen closely to the township and their concerns, and if there's any way possible to help mitigate that. So they were going to go back to the township on that as well, but ultimately, it's the Corps of Engineers, it's still, this area, it's the area that follows along Highway 75, and it is considered a high-hazard dam, and there's strict rules and regulations on what can and can't happen on a high-hazard dam. But we believe that there's something here that could resolve at least one of those two issues. So, yeah, there's, so more to come, yeah, do you have a question?
Just a quick question. So in that area, all the residences are removed, is that correct? So these would be access roads for the farmers getting to the land?
Yeah, so what would happen if these two township roads were closed? It would eliminate access to certain sections of land. And so it would require then to have this access road built that would go north and south along the high-hazard dam. And, you know, the very southern one, it'd be kind of difficult, and I mean, we have the maps here, probably maybe could have had it put on, but I, you know, we'll get more into details on it later, but.
Oh, no, this one. The farmers can't get to it.
So, and then yesterday, we had our kickoff meeting with the DMV pre-design meeting that went over, you know, we're basically trying to find what are the needs going to be to wherever we put this thing down, in terms of square footage, and it got a little bit into interior design, what would look like, but, so we did have, Klein McCarthy was here yesterday and went over and took a lot of notes. We had Chelsea from the DMV here, and Lori Johnson was part of that, and they, you know, gave, obviously gave real input. And so right now, we're just basically trying to figure out what size in terms of square footage will we need when we have to leave the Moorhead Center Mall, with the idea in mind that whatever we design, we can probably plop it anywhere, you know. So we haven't really specifically talked about a site yet. We've had a couple under consideration on how it would work, but that's the extent of my meetings.
Okay. And last Tuesday, I attended the Highway Tracking Committee meeting, which Commissioner Campbell covered, other than the Glendon meeting, which I attended the next day with Senator Kupac. What Glendon is trying to do, they changed the entrance for the school from the east side to the west side, so they want a different road going to the west side coming from County 17. And they would like to designate that a county road so that we can pay for that for them, but since that's all in the city limits, I pretty much said that we're not interested, and I know you can express your view on it, but I sort of expressed a view that we're not interested in calling it a county road. But that was the gist of the meeting with Senator Kupac, and he's going to, I guess, try and get some funds possibly to help him pay for that. They're looking at about, I think it's about a $2 million engineering company was there, and they were looking, I think, at about a $2 million project to bring that road in from County 17 to the front of the school, which is the front of the school now. So hopefully, he can get some funds for the city of Glendon. I think they're going to be looking at safe funds from the city, funds from the school, safe roads to school, so they're all looking at different areas to get some funds from. Okay, then, Highway Tracking, Building Committee, which Commissioner Campbell took care of there, I think, yeah, there's a lot of discussion going on, I mean, should we start moving, try and move out of there earlier? We've got almost probably up to a two-year lease with Roar's Construction, but should we get out of there earlier? And so we were starting to find a place, so if you guys know of a place in Clay County that would make a good motor vehicle place to build that, come up with it, so we're looking for ideas there. And then last night, I went to the Dilworth City meeting, big discussion on, although there was a $5.7 million construction on Seventh Street in Dilworth, so they're talking about how they're going to assess that over the, well, not really talked about, they told us how it's going to be, everybody will be assessing, not everybody in the city of Dilworth, but how they went about assessing it and what procedure they used, and there was a couple of people not quite satisfied with it, but they passed their assessment area, so. And that is my report, I guess. I guess I got one question on the, this roundtable meeting tomorrow morning, what does that involve, or is everybody invited, or is?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, yeah. It is, it's a public meeting that you can, we are advertised to attend at, there is a registration that's required, so if you wish to go, just let us know, and Jackie and I can get you signed up. Any of the commissioners?
No, because I got another meeting during that time, so.
Okay. Very good. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just a little bit of follow-up to our capital committee regarding the DMV. A couple of things of note there, it was interesting that was brought up about availability of bus service to wherever we go to. Apparently, there's an awful lot of the folks that go to the DMV that travel there by other, you know, so that's just something that we're going to have to take into consideration. The other issue that we had quite a bit of discussion on is, right now, the estate licensing has been separated from us for quite some time, and they're in a new temporary location, I believe in Dilworth right now. They have told us that they would like to be part of our new facility, so we're certainly, so we're having Lori and Chelsea reach out to them to find out, at a minimum, what they would need from a square footage standpoint. We also made it clear to send them a message that somehow, that's their financial responsibility to deal with that, that's not our financial responsibility. So we'll be looking at some things, I think Lori Johnson did state that the likelihood of them bringing money in, in terms of capital investment, would be slim to none, however, that could be made up through a lease. And so we will be looking at all those different avenues and having those dialogues, so.
That place is located in, still in Moorhead, it used to be Nessau.
Oh, okay, I thought it was on the Dilworth side.
It's on Highway 10, but it's close to 34th Street.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that clarification. I haven't had to take a test, so I haven't been there.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday, I participated in the Highway Tracking meeting, that's been well-covered. They did, Justin and, did talk about meeting out in Georgetown in regards to some levy closures in event of a flood. Also have asked Gabe, we had them here, appreciate their time this morning, and asked Gabe and Justin to be part of our agenda, maybe for the next couple of meetings. On the 4th, just want to extend appreciation to Sheriff Empting, Justin Sorum, Joe Olson, Mark Sloan, and multiple staff that helped with the closure details due to the weather event. On the 6th, participated in the Substance Youth Withdrawal Management with some mechanical review with Joe Olson, Klein McCarthy, and Gert's Construction. On the 6th, continued conversations with Sheriff Empting in regards to a series of different issues, road conditions, staffing challenges, some of the weather, whole over weather issues. On the 4th, or the 6th, met with Joel Paulson and Chris Bakigard, which has been addressed. That afternoon also, we did send that letter to the Buffalo Red that came at the board's request in regard to the ditch culvert issue, that's been now clarified. Yesterday, met with Joe Olson and Janelle Chaney from probation, they'll be getting there, having some space issues also within probation, and so we're going to be having an upcoming building committee meeting to address some of our other department's space issues, so I would guess that will be added to the agenda. Participated in the DMV kickoff meeting yesterday, that's been addressed. Again, we talked a little bit timeline, we hope to have a pre-design before the commission here within about two and a half, two and a half months. The talk yesterday, later afternoon, Sheriff Empting, some of the flood issues, also canine, some canine discussion with one of their animals they're having a challenge with. Just of note, to follow up from Mr. Chair's comments earlier, just a note that the city of Georgetown and also Norman County received notification that they made the first cut of congressional funding through Michelle, Representative, excuse me, Congresswoman Fishbox projects, they're allowed to pick 15 projects. I believe that the final cut now, it'll go to subcommittees, but they did make the first round. Norman County would receive $5.3 million, and Felton had a $3.4 million request that are moving forward through that process. Just wanted to also touch base on our lease that we've talked about, the DMV. Roar's has acknowledged they've received our, the board's actions in requesting to extend the lease. Right now, that lease would run through November 30th of 2025. We had, you'd asked to have me ask about their willingness to go to one, two one-year leases rather than one two-year lease. leases rather than one two-year lease, and at this point, Roar's said, let's just keep it where it's at, and in the event that the county finds something, how we can work through something at that time. And just one final thing, next Monday and Tuesday, we have been working on an HVAC project, the Family Service Center. The, it's about a five-ton HVAC system that's going to have to be removed, removed and added back to the roof, so it'll be a crane in our, in our west, or excuse me, our east parking lot for two days. It will be marked off, there will be new entrances, we'll be going through door two, 11 and 23, for temporary, and temporary parking for those days. There'll be information that will go up on our website and social media, but just an awareness that the east access to the Family Service Center will not be available next Monday and Tuesday. And that concludes my report.
Okay, Jackie? Nothing? Brian, you got something?
No.
Okay, your turn.